I will call this meeting to order at 6:01. Welcome, everybody. We're excited to have our kicking off our first round or our second round technically of interviews for a library director. And certainly, as this board knows, the library director is a really critical position at the library. They're responsible for pretty much everything that's in that building, from the facility itself, from managing and mentoring and leading the staff, and a big, long list of other activities. So we're excited to kick that off. It's also an exciting time for the library itself, right? We're, what, five years into the renovation. A lot of the kind of the facility problems like the HVAC and a lot of things are kind of settling down, and we're getting ready to kick off our strategic vision. So a very exciting time for the library as well. And with that, we're excited to kick off the interviews. So I'd like to welcome Katrina Ireland-Billado. May I pronounce that correctly?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming. It's exciting. We're all looking forward to speaking with you. As far as the agenda, Prabhu did not join us, so I think we don't need to do a roll call. We don't have any previous minutes. I think those are all going to get deferred to our next regular monthly meeting. So I think we'll kick off the interview. So we did circulate the questions among the board, of course, in advance, and circulated that to the candidates. So we will just go through the questions, and I get to start off the thing.
Do you want to do some brief introductions?
Oh, thank you. I did want to do brief introductions, both sides. So actually, we'll let you give you a brief introduction.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'm Katrina Ireland-Billado. I've been working at libraries for about 12 years now. I find this work incredibly rewarding because I believe in the power of libraries to bring their communities together. And I've been a children's librarian for many years because I believe that if you get them young, you're going to have library users for life. But I have been developing those other skills with the goal of moving towards a directorship for a few years now, and I've had some wonderful mentors along the way. So I'm really excited to be here in Grafton and to be here speaking with all of you about it.
Great, great. Thank you. And we'll just go around the room.
Good evening. I'm Chris Belts. I've been on the board for just shy of a year and a half. I have a two- and a five-year-old, both of whom spend time at the library, and an avid science fiction and fantasy reader since I picked up a book.
Rachel Toskis. So I've been on the board since the end of May. I have a little nine-month-old, and we enjoy the children's room to go and play in and watch other kids play right now.
Yeah. Erin Vandesteen. I've been a trustee for 10 years. I got to have a unique story because I'm not really an avid reader. But one of the things that was really powerful about the director in Grafton at the time is that she told me libraries are about stories, right? And there's a lot of different ways to tell stories. And ever since then, I've been just an audiobook junkie. I'm a big gamer. And one of the unique things at Grafton is video games can tell a story too. So Grafton has a really great video game collection and, you know, such a great resource, and movies as well. Lots of different ways to tell stories, and that's what hooked me. So that's why I'm a trustee.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Hi, Carrie Hogan. So I've been, this is my third term as a library trustee, and I've also spent time on the board of the Friends of the Grafton Public Library. So kind of really enjoy both of those. I currently have the liaison to the Friends. I have two daughters. I have a freshman who just is just starting in school, but really enjoyed her time at the Grafton Public Library. And I also have a junior at Grafton High School as well. And just really excited to learn more about you and welcome you. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you.
Great. Doug Bowman. I've been trustee for, I think, 15 years or so, a long time. Really got involved because I really love the mission of the library itself. My kids used it. They're much older now, so they're out of town in real world now, but really enjoyed working with the library as well.
Roger Trahan. I've been a trustee since, I'm a newbie, since '23. And my introduction to Grafton's library really was in the context of a parent. I have a 14-year-old son, and he got his first library card, I think, at age five, following his dad as a word nerd. And so libraries are awesome, and go free speech.
You're here.
Yes. All right. Well, thanks, everyone. We'll just start jumping into the questions then. Great. So I'm first, and really just trying to get an idea of your overall interest. You know, what brought you or what got you interested in Grafton as a town and the Grafton Library, the directorship there?
Yeah. So like I said, I've been in libraries for over a decade now, and I really believe in the library's mission and purpose. And one of the things, the things that I love about Grafton is you already have a wonderful staff, you have some awesome programs, you've got this beautiful new building, your town clearly cares about your library. And I see that as an opportunity to expand upon everything that you're already doing at the library. So I've been working hard, like I said, to develop my own skills in management and budgeting and personnel and all of those things. And I would love to have a hand in the broader scope, so the developing of the vision and the direction of a library. And I feel like my values, free speech and access, definitely align with the mission of Grafton's, and just would love to drive that forward.
Can you elaborate on it, you know, maybe like what your initial goals are, first 30, 60, 90-day goals?
Oh, sure. So the first 30 days, I would really focus on listening and learning. My goal would be to talk to all of the staff, to have conversations with all of you, to speak with the friends, community members, and to find out where the challenges are, where we're positioned well, the things that we need to start working on to move the library forward. By six, in 60 days, I would want to have a really firm understanding of all of those issues so that we can start aligning our goals towards addressing them. So whether that's looking at updating policy or communication strategies, looking at figuring out if we have any immediate needs for staffing or building stuff, or, you know, any of those kinds of things that need to be looked at right away. And, I mean, hopefully, in 90 days, I'll have strong working relationships with all of you, with the staff, with the friends, with community members, and that everybody will have sort of a clear picture of where we're moving and where we're moving towards, and feel really good about where we want to go and very clear on the mission so that we can start to take those steps.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Can you please share an example or two where you had to effectively communicate a challenge that was solved collaboratively by the library staff and really communicate that to both the town administration and the board?
Sure. So about halfway through my tenure in Northborough, my children's staff were feeling very frustrated. I had hired two powerhouse programmers. They were amazing children's librarians. They still are today. And they, along with my full team, were really driving this explosion of use in the children's room. We were very, very busy, and there was only, we were only a department of three. And the stress points were happening on weekends when there was only one children's person on staff, and in the evenings when there was also only one children's person on staff. And we were, they were feeling frustrated because we would look out at the circulation desk and see two circulation staff who were bored. They didn't have any work to do. And at the time, children's was responsible for the circulation of the children's materials. So it was a lot of work on them. And we brainstormed together as a team, and then I brought to my director and the circulation supervisor a suggestion to move circulation out of the children's room entirely and into the circulation department. It had, we did end up doing the process. It worked beautifully because it alleviated some of the stress on the children's staff, particularly at those points in the evening and on weekends where we were very harried. And it gave the circulation staff a little more to do, and it made them feel like they were really supporting their team members that needed the support. Throughout the process, of course, I was working with my director. We were reporting to the trustees because this was a pretty big workflow shift. And at the same time, we were researching, so this was back when self-checkout stations were still relatively new, so we were researching that. We ended up implementing that at the same time to mitigate concerns of the circulation staff that they were going to have overflow work and that it was going to be too much on them. And it ended up not being the case, but just really managing expectations and being very clear about how this was going to benefit both sides. Everybody got on board, and the trustees were very supportive of the movement. And yeah, it was a wonderful thing.
No, appreciate you sharing that. Off of that, a little bit more too. So if you can share a little bit about your management and supervisor style?
Yeah. So I would say that my management style is very collaborative, certainly mission-driven. I think it's really important to make sure that everybody is on the same page, that we have really clear goals, we know where we're going. It's the perfect time with the strategic planning process to get everybody on the same page, to make sure that staff has all of the tools that they need to complete the tasks that are set out, and also that there's a culture of open communication and feedback. I like to think that I'm a very approachable person. I want to develop relationships with people where they feel free coming to me with issues that they have or with challenges, and that we find solutions together. So, for instance, and I mentioned this in my first interview, when the children's staff reclassified the entire nonfiction collection, this was a massive project, and it took, in my first library, it took nine months to do this project, and then my second one, it took six months. And it really required daily check-ins, constant conversation, not only about specifically how we were going to classify each individual book, but really cool conversations, like nerdy library conversations, about how to present information so that it reaches the audience that it's intended for in a way that makes it really intuitive for families. And so we ended up not only designing this classification scheme that was super usable for families and very intuitive for children to find what they were looking for, but it had that added benefit of creating a cohesive team. We understood where each other was coming from. We felt comfortable challenging each other when we had questions or disagreements. And so finding opportunities for staff to collaborate on projects like that, I think, is really important. I also think it's very important to make sure that I'm offering staff the ability to participate in professional development. There are lots of opportunities in the library world to do this, and so I'd want to seek out, obviously, start with listening and developing those relationships so I understand what each staff person is going for, what their goals are, not just at the library but beyond, and making sure that they're feeling inspired in their roles as well through professional development.
Can you, in your current role, how many staff do you manage?
I have two direct reports in my current role, but I'm also sort of responsible for everybody below the director. So they, I, yeah.
Okay. I guess that's to me. So wondering if you can describe any experience you have with managing facilities oversight, repairs, you know, either working with the town departments to do that or with private contractors?
Yeah. Okay. So my experience is mostly in direct because, as the assistant director, I play a supportive role to the director, who has the bulk of the responsibility for the building maintenance. However, because I'm the assistant director, I'm in on all of those conversations and do have a hand in writing some of the requests. So for instance, in Ashland, we had a roof leak in our, the older part of our building, and we worked with the Community Preservation Committee to write a request for funding that I did do the writing for. I showed up at the committee meeting to explain what we were asking for so that the committee could put it on the warrant, and showed up at town meeting to defend it if needed. So I am familiar with that process. In Northborough, I, like I said, I wasn't responsible for the RFPs for similar repairs that needed to be done in the older part of that building, but I am intimately familiar with the RFP process and would feel comfortable taking that on. Also, our HVAC units in Ashland started to fail this year. So yeah, all 20 of them need to be replaced. And the skylights also failed. So that was working with DPW to find capital funding. And I was in on those conversations with DPW to try to figure out how a plan forward to replace the units.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, we've had a number of HVAC unit replacements ourselves.
Isn't it fun? And also, on that note, one of the things that I appreciated at my former position in Northborough was their very proactive approach to some of the maintenance there. So they had a regular schedule for carpet cleaning and furniture cleaning. And I think that especially with this beautiful new building you have, I think preventative maintenance is going to be really key to extending the life of those pieces. So I would seek to install a plan like that as well.
Roger, I'll hand it over to you. All right. What did you find to be the most effective way to manage your budget in the library's financials in previous roles? And I guess you could speak both departmentally and overall.
Sure. So I think that the best way to manage budgets is to have a clear idea of your fixed costs and your priorities, and to just be really clear about what you can do and to be very communicative with the people who are helping you, AKA the trustees, to go through the budget. So departmentally, for the last, you know, nine or so years as a children's librarian, I was managing my departmental budget, both for collection development and the Friends budget that allowed us to do the programming. And I would try to evenly disperse funding and to stretch it as much as I could, using it wisely, so that we could meet the needs of the community in the best way possible. The last couple of years, I have had a hand in developing the library's municipal budget alongside my director. So I have been paying the bills for the last couple of years. We've worked on creating the budget together and presenting it to the finance committee in the town, and then administering it. So I'm the one that's responsible for maintaining the spreadsheets and making sure that we're on track, and then making sure that my director has the information to share with the trustees when the time comes. And that's something that I really appreciated in my previous role is that, and I don't know if that happens here, but that the trustees would get the budget report every month, every meeting. Okay, good.
Yeah, we do the same.
Okay.
Ideally.
Actually, don't do that. So, but I think that's important because the more eyeballs we have on it, the more that we can make sure that we're administering it in a responsible way.
So as assistant director, you've been through two complete budget cycles?
Mm-hmm. And starting a third.
All right. And what is the budget, like the overall?
Of Ashland?
Yeah, total budget?
It's, this year it's $503,000.
Yeah, okay. So we're about 1.2, I think, now?
About 1.2.
1.2 million, yeah. But...
Yeah. Many more staff in Grafton.
Yep.
Which is wonderful.
Great.
All right. I'll ask Prabhu's question here. So we are about to engage in a strategic planning process once the new director is on board. It's one of our top priorities. And so just kind of curious, any previous experiences you have and how you might approach it as in the director role?
Sure. So I do not have any direct experience leading a strategic planning committee myself. However, I have been involved in the strategic planning process in previous roles. In Northborough, about halfway through my tenure there, I was part of the staff focus group, and I really appreciated being able to share my opinions and my hopes and dreams for the library. So I would certainly seek to make sure that staff in Grafton had the opportunity to do the same because it was something that meant a lot to me. Every year, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners asks libraries to file an action plan based directly from the strategic plan. And so as a department head, I would develop departmental goals and write them into the action plan directly stemming from the existing strategic plan. So I am very familiar with not only building the goals and objectives, but also carrying them out. For instance, as a result of that strategic planning process, we found that we had a fairly large homeschooling community that was not being served in the way that they wanted to. And so at the end of the process, we put that into our goals in the children's room department to really grow our services for that community. We reached out to several people and created a, like a newsletter list to reach out to them, and then we started monthly programming. And our first program invited about 20 different families into the library. And I had one staff member engaging with the children in a storytime while I was doing a presentation for the parents about library services and everything that they had access to as library users. And so for me, it was a wonderful way to see how the strategic planning process can have a real impact on the community needs. So...
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions? I guess I should be asking this with each, if anyone had any follow-up questions, but otherwise, we'll move on to Erin.
So I'm chair of the Policy Subcommittee. It's been difficult to operate without a director because a director really kind of drives a lot of policy development. And, you know, we're just part of the process to kind of vet the policy and to make sure it makes sense for the community because, as trustees, we are advocates for the community first and foremost. So this is, I guess I'd like to know more about your philosophy on policy management, but specifically, how do you ensure policies are not only well-crafted and aligned with library values, but also effectively implemented and embraced by staff and patrons?
Mm-hmm. I think that policy is, good policy is absolutely essential because it can protect staff and patrons and administration from, you know, adverse effects. So I think it's really essential when you're crafting policy to have input from both trustees and staff so that you're building policy, like you said, that's mission-driven and aligned with our goals. I think there's a wealth of resources, for instance, through the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners and the Massachusetts Library System. They have an entire section development, develop, sorry, devoted to policies that are on file in other Massachusetts libraries. So I would use that as a resource. But I'd also want a lot of eyeballs on policies that we're looking at so that we're making sure that they are implementable and they are feasible for staff to roll out every day. So having conversations about if things make sense and where the snags are going to be, if there are any, is really key before we make decisions. So I guess it depends on the policy. And also, I think that it's really important to be revisiting policies regularly. These things shouldn't be, you know, dead documents. They're living documents, and we need to stay on top of the changes in the community and in the world. For instance, you know, starting in 2022, when the book bannings started again, I know a lot of libraries updated their collection development policy to have strong intellectual freedom and freedom to read language in the policy that protected a librarian and the librarian's job to do collection development. And they often updated them to include programming in that same vein. So...
Thank you.
Seek to do that.
Did you have any cases where you encountered either issues with the community not following policy, where the staff had to address it, or maybe a policy came up where it needed to get updated based on some situation that occurred?
Yeah.
I mean, hopefully not, but...
Yeah. So, yes, I mentioned the programming one because, and I think I mentioned this in my first interview, we, in Northborough, were approached by a select ward member who had written a picture book, co-authored with one of their friends who was a drag queen, and they wanted us to host a drag queen storytime. And we enthusiastically said, yes, of course we will. We want to do that. Of course, we did experience some dissatisfaction with that decision. We had some vocal members of the community who felt very strongly that this was not what the public library should be doing. We looked at our policy, and we rooted our response firmly in that. We did, of course, listen to the voices. In an emotional situation like this, I think it's really important to be an opening, an open and validating ear for people because oftentimes, they just really want to be heard and they want to know that we understand them. But we did explain ultimately that it was our policy to have and host programs that met the needs of all patrons and that not all programs were going to appeal to all patrons, but this was one that we felt strongly that we would continue doing. So the program went off without a hitch. The eight naysayers in the back were respectful. We worked with town administration and law enforcement to have a police presence the day of to keep everybody safe, and it was a wonderful program. The kids were parading around in costume and singing songs and reading books, and it was wonderful. But we did go back to the collection development policy with the trustees and add language protecting our programming. and add language protecting our programming. So specifically because of that.
Oh, thank you for sharing. Okay, looks like Carrie, you're next.
Yeah, thank you, okay. Please share your experience with engaging with the community to make them a part of the library community.
Sure. I, I love library engagement, like that's, that's one of my favorite things. It's so much fun when you're a children's librarian doing it too. But, um, so for instance, one of the things that we implemented in Northborough was a welcome baby program where we worked with the town clerk to get a list of names of newborn infants and sent out a little welcome pamphlet with a coupon to come into the library and get a free book. And it had the wonderful effect of bringing new parents or new folks in the town into the library so that we could say, hey, how are you? I'm Katrina, like you're welcome here even though your baby is very small. We still have board books and we have programs for you and here's what we have for new parents. So it was really effective in bringing new community members in. As a children's librarian, I have done many, a summer reading promotional skits in the schools. So this last year, we were Minecraft Steve and a variety of Minecraft monsters. And the, the remarkable thing about, and this was the, the first year that we were able to get into the schools in Ashland because prior to my coming, the library didn't have a very strong relationship with the schools. So after a meeting with the administration and with the principals, I was able to convince them to give me an audience with the kids. We went from having two hundred and twelve summer reading participants in FY23 to seven hundred and ten this past year.
That's great.
Yeah. So, and it, I, I credit that directly with reaching out to the schools and getting the kids excited to come to the library. So those kinds of opportunities are the ones that I would seek out. Aligning library programs with local businesses and community organizations and seeing how we can collaborate because I think those collaborations really make us stronger.
Well, thank you. And you, you touched on this in your earlier answer, but, but I would just like to ask it again in case you would like to elaborate on another example. How would you handle complaints related to censorship or challenges to material that some patrons may seem as controversial? And I do recognize that you gave us a wonderful example already.
Yeah, so that, that's definitely the biggest example. But I, I think that the, really the biggest thing in any of these very emotional situations, because I don't, I don't know that anybody is trying to be rude. Nobody's trying to give us a hard time. They care deeply about their point of view and they want to share it. So it's really important to hear them out and validate their point of view. So that's always my first step. That actually happened to me today. I had somebody come to me because they were angry about a miscommunication about a program. And my first response was, I'm so sorry, that was your experience, I didn't know, tell me more. So making sure that people feel heard is absolutely key. Like we did with the program, we have to root ourself in policy. So having strong policies that protect staff and administration is key. And explaining the policy clearly to the person who has a disagreement with it, I think oftentimes will, if not persuade them, then at least they understand why we're making the decisions that we're making. And of course, any good library policy is going to have a request for reconsideration so that they can be heard formally in front of the board. So that would be my approach, just making sure that they're heard, making sure that they know that I understand them, that we are working from sound, strong policy and that if they feel that they need to go further, that they have the ability to do so.
Thank you.
Great. Does anybody have any, I mean, follow-up questions on any of the discussions previously?
Yes, I did have one question. So, so with the position of library director, one of the very unique roles of the library director is the reporting, like filling out the errors reports. And I was just wondering if you could elaborate on your participation as a assistant library director? How involved have you been with those types of submissions?
Yeah, I did both the errors and the financial report for the last two years, so I'm intimately familiar. Yeah, no, I'm very familiar with the process, with the requirements, with the folks that I need to reach out to if I have any questions. So I'd feel very comfortable stepping into that.
And I had, I had one follow-up.
I was just saying luckily, I think we just finished the most of those reports.
Well, it was the new director's third, so I hope so.
Yes, Roger?
Yes, as far as that, that final question regarding complaints and censorship and everything, we in Grafton, we have a material selection policy which includes having adopted the ALA's Freedom to Read Statement, which is a, a really welcome and strongly worded three-pager. Does Ashland, has Ashland adopted that statement or something similar? And what are your thoughts on that statement generally as far as that, that three-pager and that, that whole document?
So Ashland has not adopted the statement as part of their formal policy, but they do have a strong collection development policy in place, including a request for reconsideration. So that's not something that the trustees have looked at in my tenure at the Ashland Library.
Are you familiar with the statement?
I am, yes.
All right, I'm just curious. It's, it's one of my sort of, I guess.
It's like a guiding principle.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it's one of those things that I think sometimes people aren't aware of. And maybe the general public could use a refresher on that. A lot of people have never read it, so I'm just curious about, you know, what your familiarity was and how, if, if Ashland had incorporated that stuff.
Yeah, they, they did not incorporate it, but I do think that it's, I'm so grateful to the American Library Association because I feel like they're doing the work to give libraries the tools and the words to put strong policies in place. So it's a lot easier for us to look at an overarching governing body like ALA and have that large body of work and that, you know, the national stature of a, an organization like that to fall back on and really take a lead from, so.
Thank you.
Yes, Erin? So first and foremost, how many staff in, was it Northborough and Ashland? Yeah?
At Northborough had eight staff and Ashland has eleven staff.
Right, so, and I think that's a common size of, of most libraries I've kind of viewed across Massachusetts. So, you know, you've had the luxury of being an assistant library director. We don't have an assistant library director. Would you see a need for somebody in that role now that you, you know, pretty well familiar with, with what the role is? But clearly you've been taking on duties of a library director. So, you know, are you going to need some help in this new role? Understanding that it's a large library, many staff, there's probably a lot more to do than maybe Ashland or North, or Northborough would have had to do.
Yeah. Well, I think, I mean, I'm, I'm never going to say no to, to help like that, but I also think that it's really important to look at the people that we have and the structure that's already in place at the library and to see where the workflows already are. So, you know, in Ashland, we don't have a, a financial assistant. So all of the financials come under the purview of the director and the assistant director. So I would wonder, yeah, I guess that's my answer. I would want to see what the workflow is for everybody on staff existing and see if there's a need before I, before I ask for, for more, you know? Because with such a, with such a large staff, it's a wonderful thing because you have so many talented people to draw from. You've got so much room for growth and challenges and collaborations and ways to, to move people around and really use their skills and their interests. So, yeah, I, I guess I would really want to have conversations with people and see how everything works before I, before I do that.
Sure. Does either Ashland or Northborough have unionized staff?
Yes, both of them did.
Both do, okay.
Yes, several. And so, and very familiar with union issues, particularly when it comes to FMLA. We're dealing with that in Ashland right now. Yeah, and just being aware of the, the situations around that and the, the do's and don'ts.
Yep.
I had one follow-up.
All right.
So piggybacking on what Erin had asked, so director, assistant director, financial director, did you have in Ashland, or do you have an executive assistant? Okay.
No, no. It's just so in Ashland, we have the director, the assistant director, and then many library assistants.
Okay. And Grafton, we have a director and then we have an executive assistant as well.
And then in the depart, we have department heads that are then, of course, in charge of their departments, so. A nice, nice structure.
Yeah.
Well, we certainly want to have, answer questions that you might have in the group.
Sure.
So we'll open it up to your questions.
Oh, wonderful, I have some. So I am curious, how will the person in this position receive feedback?
Anybody want to take that, or shall I? You can.
So I'm going to speak very informally. But before Roger and Doug both graciously took the mantle of chair, you know, I was coming off of the, the chair of the board and it was like right after the pandemic. And so there was a lot of, I'm going to use the word upheaval. You know, the community coming back out of their houses and using the library, you know, in droves, which was fantastic, brand new library in 2021. So in very inform, well, I guess not informally, but every Monday, I made a, a point to have a phone call with the director, just an open line of communication. And I would just simply do that on, on my, my drive home. And I think that was a really great resource because it was just an, almost like a one-on-one, but really with no agenda, just say, oh, how's it going? You know, so I found that very valuable. Also to have a direct line, you know, to kind of the director and understand what's going on at the library as well. But if anybody else wants to speak to that.
That's great.
I mean, at, at least formally, the board would be responsible for writing the annual review, like writing the annual goals as well as the annual review. Yep.
So was your question how, aside from communicating and, and, and what, aside from the annual and then the weekly calls, certainly on the front end, the director, the incoming director who is new, could, I, I hope to speak for everyone here, that that person just wouldn't be left alone and, and, oh, well, seen in a week. You know, that, that they'd be the whole sort of orientation ease into process. But is your question about how you would receive feedback on your, on your?
Yeah, I, I think, I, I value feedback because I want to always continue to be better. And if I'm missing things, I would rather know about it. So I appreciate people reaching out to me and being like, hey Katrina, you goofed up here. Or maybe you can take this different approach, or you missed this. I think that's really important because you just get better when you get constant feedback like that, so.
I guess the other piece I'd add into, right? If there was ever anything that gets raised to the, the board, really our approach is to come back and say, hey, tell us more, what happened? Almost exactly the line you used earlier, right? So as teams are, are forming, right? Sometimes things will come up and, and our approach is to have the back of the director, right? Because the director is the leader of the organization and then help facilitate some of that conversation as opposed.
And, and I think it probably, excuse me, goes back to your early comments about that thirty-sixty-ninety window, about really getting to know, being first in that listening mode and developing relationships. And then from there, having a working relationship with each of the four department heads and, and hoping that through that relationship building and regular contact, that there'd be the open lines of communication where you would receive feedback on the day-to-day. And, and also how you're handling things and, and everything, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, likewise, we're really interested in open communication between the two groups as well, of course.
It, it's, it's tricky because we're not, I mean, we're an executive board and, and I think some, some folks, including the public, may, may have the expectation for us to step in. And we have to be careful about our respective roles and not to overstep. And so it can be a challenge as a volunteer executive board that, to remind ourselves that we're not, we're not people's bosses, you know what I mean? I mean, we're technically, if you were to be the, the new director, we would technically be your boss. But, you know, but on a day-to-day, we're really not in charge of the place as, as an executive.
That's a, that's a great way to, to say it. Town and, and the, I would say, the town administrator is really your boss, right? For the day-to-day stuff, but we're here to support you and make sure that you're successful. So we only know, we can only help you as much as you kind of communicate to us, right? So, because we're not, we're, we're not your boss in the cubicle next door, you know what I mean? We don't know what's going on day-to-day, so. Yeah, certainly, you know, I would invite that as maybe something that could be developed further for us. We would, I think we would be receptive to it. Great question.
Thank you.
What qualities are you looking for in a director?
Who wants to start?
I can start. I think it's really someone who looks at the team and says, how do you help grow with the people and their, their strengths at the starting point? Especially with it being a little bit of a different structure that at some other local libraries around, just making sure that, that we're kind of rooting in what, what we have today and understanding that, not that it's not open for adjustments and changes, but just recognizing there, there's a reason why it looks a little different and we are the way we are. So I think that the staff engagement and leaning in is.
I would also say really like a champion for the library is somebody who like supports the staff, who supports, you know, the community, who really brings everybody up and really allows us to provide the best services possible to, you know, to the community.
Yeah, certainly somebody who's a facilitator and empowers the staff, right? I think that's really important, but also understands when there's need for correction, right? Because we, you know, the, I want to say the library director, at least in my mind, is, you know, the CEO and, you know, really needs to have that strategic vision. And if, you know, what's currently going on doesn't align with the vision, is not afraid to identify it and make those course corrections and sometimes have the difficult conversations. Yep.
And I'll add that, in piggybacking what has already been said, that as far as, sometimes we end up, we meaning, you know, libraries and, and staff, that's the place they go day-to-day. But it's basically we as a board and the library staff, all of them, are here for the community. And, and I, I think that we sometimes need to remind ourselves of that and that people expect and enjoy a library which is a welcoming, welcoming environment and a place you're really excited to go to, regardless of your background or what. really excited to go to, regardless of your background or what age group or what you're looking for, that it is a welcoming environment. And so certainly, those type of skills that would end up having the end result be having the library, not to say that it's not a welcoming environment, but to maintain the library as a welcoming environment, right? So I can't say that it's one thing, one specific skill that lands you there, that constellation of skills that gets us there, so.
I would agree. I think being welcoming starts with a smile and then everything else follows. All right. Thank you. How would you measure success in this role?
I mean, I would reiterate what they just said about what we're looking for the director, right? I mean, the library, we have, we have great staff, we have great community and programs already, but seeing that just only get, you know, expand to more diverse groups, more programs, getting more of the patrons and community involved with the library, I think just continuing to grow as a library would be great. And obviously, that involves bringing different age groups into the library, it involves working with different community members and businesses, just to get them more engaged.
I think I would add, in the first 90 days, if it's starting to have a sense of norming within the library, right, I think.
A sense of what, I'm sorry?
Like norming, like everyone's falling into a rhythm with the new leadership. I think that that would be a great milestone to hit, right? Everyone has different leadership styles, every different ways of communicating, so in the first three months, everyone's effectively communicating, I would say that'd be a big one.
It's important.
Yeah, I'll just add also, as a, as a board, we need to see data also. It's great, I love, I love hearing, one of the things that the library's always done a really great job with, and I'd like to see it again, is like the yes log. Like, what are people asking for that you can say yes to? And sometimes there's no, we don't have that yet, but it lets, you know, it lets us know, it lets the board know, you know, kind of how we can better serve the community, you know, either if we need to use some of the funding that we have to maybe purchase something that would benefit the community, we just don't know. So that's a really great feedback system for us from the community is the yes/no log. But also just, you're talking about what does success look like, right? So, you know, determine what a baseline looks like, right? And, you know, perhaps, certainly our physical items is starting to diminish and digital's certainly gone up, so those are things that we look at as a trend since the pandemic. But yeah, just setting a baseline and maybe setting some goals, small goals to begin with and kind of see where we get, you know?
Yeah, definitely. I would, I forgot to say, I would definitely look for those quick wins because that allows the staff and community members to know that I'm listening and that we're moving forward, but on this other side of that coin, I wouldn't want to make sweeping changes to people. Really listening to people first.
I guess one of the expectations, so, you know, we meet monthly, the expectation is that the director's going to come and give us a really good report that tells the story of what's going on in the library with the numbers, you know, the circulation numbers, you know, like things like the yes log, and also, you know, to bring forward, you know, problems that may have arisen in the library and how they were resolved, or things that are not resolved that we need to help assist. And that's, we're here to support you, you know, if there's something that requires additional funding or, you know, or you just need some input, like we really want to, you know, that's our primary role, you know, to support you doing that. And then also too, just, you know, you've talked about this, but, you know, building those really good relationships, like that's what we want to hear. We want to hear what, you know, from, you know, the town administrator and from, you know, the community and from, you know, the staff, you know, that the outreach is happening and that it's been a positive experience.
That's one of the things that I love.
I mean, the board is here to support the director, so we try to be involved wherever we can and help out the director. Like you mentioned the budget earlier, we typically have one or two trustees that help the director at least review the budget and see if there's something that might have been missed or if there's any questions, and then we will attend like the finance committee meeting to support the director, support the library, so. And Erin mentioned the policy committee that we sit in on, so certainly that's what we're here for.
And I'll add one thing. So Carrie took the words out of my mouth, thank you, Carrie, regarding the director's report, the monthly meetings, I don't recall us having, each director in the past has had a sort of different style, but they've basically covered the same items, but maybe in a different format, word differently, different order. But expecting a robust director's report, and I don't recall whether we have a specific template, but when those, aside from the agendas and the discussion that takes place during the meetings, the, when we've discussed the director's reports and all those items, there's always a lot of follow-up questions, and that would be a reflection, a sort of litmus, one litmus test as to how well a new director is really settling in by their familiarity with all these issues and the way they present all those issues to us and how the new director would answer those questions, those follow-up questions that arise out of that report, so.
Thank you.
Great.
I love, one, one question, one more. This is an easy one, right? What do you love about Grafton?
You want to hear from all of us? I mean, it's, it's a very large town, but it's, it's unique in the sense that it's still almost very divided in a way, and I don't know if you kind of got a sense of that, but the, and this isn't maybe why I love it, but it's really just kind of what's interesting and unique about Grafton. We have three zip codes, which is kind of strange for, you know, it's a town, right? It's not a city. And there's a South Grafton and Grafton and North Grafton, and we used to have three library branches, right? So there's still, with the community, there's still very kind of, oh, you know, I remember when I could walk to the library, you know, it was right up, right up the street, you know, so I think there's still a little bit of that too, and that's just kind of what's unique about our, our community, which I think maybe speaks to what I love about Grafton is that it's really kind of a fun place to kind of set up, set up your roots and raise a family and, you know, really fantastic amenities, and it's well-supported by, by the town and the town's budget, so.
That's wonderful.
I love Grafton because it is a sense of community, is much, in as much as we are now at 20,000 people, and I talk to old timers who say, I remember when we were at 6,000, super old folks, but, and they remember when it was 8,000 and 10 and 12, and it has changed a lot, there's been a real flip in population, but it has, still maintains its charm. But I think that's a two-way street. That charm, that sense of community doesn't fall in people's laps. If you, if, as a resident, I've sort of gone boots to the ground, having sat on a lot of committees and, you know, supporting small businesses, gone to all sorts of functions, whether it's Grafton celebrates the holidays or Big Truck Day or a National Night Out or supporting the Community Harvest Project. So it really does, that hasn't fallen on my lap, it does take effort, but there is just a ton of stuff to do around here. There's a ton of history, it's a great New England town, and big enough, yet small enough.
Yeah, there are a lot of community, you mentioned, community events, you mentioned Grafton celebrates the holidays, so I don't know if you know that, but there's like 20, 20 stops, and the library's one of them, and a lot of places on the Common are one of them where just everyone's going through all of these stops during the holidays.
All frosty, frosty stuff.
And at the end, it's on the Common, which means a lot of people are going into the library. There's the Farmer's Market on the Common, and a lot of people go through the library for that. I honestly think the library is a big change because before the renovation, for example, the teen room was like this part of the room, and now you go into the library, now there's a dedicated teen room, and there's teens all over the place, they're in the study room studying or they're in the teen room, and the children, of course, that's always active. It's just so much more vibrant because of the space.
I think there really is a sense of community, and I think the library really does support it with Grafton celebrates the holidays, like there's planning for that already now, like with Halloween, so they, you know, they shut down, you know, South Street and people trick-or-treat, and people come to the library and get, you know, candy at the front door and then go and trick-or-treat down the road. There's the egg hunt on the Common, like there's just a lot, and it's, you know, just we have, we're so blessed to have such a beautiful Common and, you know, our gorgeous library, right, you know, adjacent to the Common, it's, you know, it's really very fortunate.
I think that also people, especially where we have open-town meeting, I think people, I know I feel like, and I can speak for others, they feel they have a say. I think that a lot of places, their sort of politic has swallowed them. It's not, although Grafton is growing and I think there's some tension there, people do have a say, and I think that's an important thing that you don't see in cities, so.
Yeah, I echo everything that everyone said, just kind of two other things that I'd share is that, you know, my kids went around my backyard, I know all my neighbors, and people seem to want the same thing, and that's just really wonderful. But also, the town seems to really value public services, the library's new, the Department of Public Works has new building, the high school is relatively new, and so that's really like a huge value, I think, that's there.
For sure.
And I would say, someone who's newer to the community, my husband grew up here, but we just moved here two years ago, one of, I think, the best parts of Grafton is how people want to lean in to help, and so if there is something you need, like, I know our town administrator has been awesome and they're, they're great, anyone really I've ever asked any question to, either on the administrative side or within the community, like people want to help you find your space and help solve things that come up too, so I think that just leans into the level of, of community. I think it's a little deeper than, than a superficial community.
That's wonderful, thank you. That's all I have. I guess what are, what are next steps?
So we just kicked off our second round of interviews, so once we get through them, I mean, we hope to make a decision pretty quickly, but we, we may have other interviews to perform, but we're working to get those in as fast as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for, definitely enjoyed talking to you, it was nice seeing you a second time.
Likewise. I'm going to come and shake everybody's hand again.
Yeah, yeah.
It's okay. Very nice to meet you.
Thank you so much.
And obviously, reach out at any point, questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, yours as well.
Doug, would you like me to make a motion to move into executive session?
Yeah, I think we're, we don't, I don't think there's any, anything to discuss really in open session, so, yep, I'll entertain a motion. A motion made and seconded to enter executive session in order to discuss, it's, a lot of the discussion is going to be around the search committee, so it's going to involve some of the earlier candidates, which is why we need to go into executive session.
So who made that motion second, or?
I moved in, either one of them seconded.
So who's taking minutes of this stuff?
Sounds like you.
So who made the, all right.
Rachel made it and seconded by Carrie. All right, by a roll call, Doug, I?